Good morning and welcome. We'll call the special called meeting of the Cleveland County Board of Education for Wednesday, June 29th to order. This meeting is called to close out certain items, to close out the 21-22 school year. And before we move forward, I'd like to recognize two former employees. Cleveland County Schools had two staff members pass away in the past week. Ms. Debbie Ross, a teacher from West Elementary, and Mr. Wayne Logan, an ABA Tech from Township Three, were both extremely valuable to the CCS team. Both had wonderful personalities and a deep passion for the students at Cleveland County Schools, and were dedicated to their families and community. Ms. Ross and Mr. Logan will be missed. Our sympathy and prayers go out to the families during this difficult time. I'd like to call on Mr. Pliss for our invocation.
Let's pray.
Thank you.
Heavenly Father, Lord, we come to you today, Lord. Or I'm thankful. I'm thankful that I live in a country where I can stand up and say your name, Lord. Lord, I ask you to be with the families, the Ross family, the Logan family, be with them and help them through this situation, Lord. We ask you to help us to make decisions that would be pleasing to you, Lord. Please be with us and be in our midst, Lord. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. And I forgot to say, we do have Mr. Blanton by phone. Danny, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Mr. Hunt, if you'd lead in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we don't have approval of the agenda on the agenda, but we need to add that. What's the pleasure of the board?
Let's motion approve.
Motion by Mr. Fitch, second by Mr. Shores. Any questions or discussion on the agenda? Those in favor, if you'd raise your hand. Mr. Blanton?
Aye.
All right, that carries nine zero. First is Budget Amendment Five. Mr. Karpinski, would you like to provide an update on that? Morning.
Chairman, Board of Education members, Dr. Fisher, you have in front of you the final amendment for this year. Happy to say that, I can tell you that much. It was an interesting year, because we got our budget mid-November, so we were in reaction mode, quite frankly. Then, of course, we've got something like 65 revisions from the state, and literally got some the morning when we were meeting at the Finance HR Forward Committee. So, it was trying, and then, of course, sometimes we'll get things last minute, and we did get something today that we had to adjust for as well. By law, we have to have this budget in the order it's in. Fund Two first, which is local funds, then you go into Fund One, whatever. So, if you can, you know, bear with me, let's start on page two, because that's our state money. And our goal in this case is to maximize state money. Then, once you maximize it, you've got to do some pushing around. So, quite frankly, that's what we do. So, let's go to page two of eight, please. In this particular case, we reduced regular curricular services by $900,000, because on the state funds, we needed to have an additional $750,000 for alternative programs, which is primarily EC programs. And then, financial and human resource services were short, so our budget in the state public school fund went from 203,000 to 353,000. With that said, we spent every dollar we possibly could in state, because that's what we do. That's what we have to do, and we're being as prudent with taxpayer dollars on a local level by making sure we maximize state and federal funding. Page three of eight, we have, this is the fund for the federal grants. You know how tight that is? That's probably our tightest budget. We have to submit the information to the state, it goes to the feds, we kick it around back and forth, and all of a sudden, we make adjustments, because they don't like something or do like something, and we're blessed that we have people in place that are making this all happen. But we have a very small amount of adjustments there. School-based support service for 5,500. Nutrition services, that's the one that came up in committee, because we got money for chillers that had to be accounted for that tightly, because it is federal money. So, what you see is an adjustment for 15,411 on page three of eight, section five and six, which is the federal grants revenue. Next, section seven and eight, you have Kids Around and Child Nutrition. Those are enterprise funds, so we account for them all in Fund Five. And unfortunately, we all know that there were issues in the Kids Around account. Our best guess is we're going to need another $50,000 for a total of 175,000 to pretty much bail them out for the year. There's no other way of saying it. They came up short in revenues. Their expenses were higher for various reasons. This is not the first year. That's why I believe the board closed it down. So, what you see there is payments to other governmental units, that's Fund Eight, which we'll talk about soon, increasing to 50,000. Now, quite frankly, it's going to be probably more like 45,000, but what I wanted to do is take the check, in fact, after this meeting, we'll take a check to the bank, put it in, and more than likely, we'll settle it. Once it's all settled, we'll go get the money out of there. So, that 50 is a little overkill, or a little high, excuse me. Section nine and 10, this is our special revenue fund. Not a whole lot going on here. We got additional money from the special population, or in the special population services. Once again, that's coming from Medicaid reimbursements. As you see on the bottom, that 57,254 is additional revenue, and we're going to spend it in what we call, in the accounting world, 5,200, which is special populations, and Ms. Wendy Fitch will spend that money as needed. And not necessarily this year. Some of this will carry over, of course. The next item you see on there is the loan, going from 125, adding 50 to it to make it 175. Hopefully, it's only 170, don't know for sure, but, once again, if there's money left in that account, it'll go back to the Board of Education accounts, and we will wrap up the Kids Around program. The next item here is for 20,000. It's for the TPA courts. At the end of last year, we had a timing difference, no big deal, it happens all the time. I would, a little surprised we caught it this late, but it was an accounting timing difference. Nobody did anything wrong, it's just we missed the purchase order, left it open, it rolls into budget, and we fixed that with the fund balance appropriated for outstanding encumbrances that went from 37, 36, 928, down to 16,480. But that relates to the previous year, and we fixed that literally in this amendment. The next item we have is, and I skipped it, school-based support services. This morning, we received another invoice from the county for equipment for the SROs. It's a little less than 17,000. So, what I did is said, let's book the SRO budget, and if it only ends up being 16,500, so be it. You just have a little more in the budget than you really need, but we really can't pay that until we vet it, make sure it's correct, make sure what's going on there is accurate. And then, of course, to be able to make all that happen, now I'm going back down to the revenue side of the house, you have a $67,000 increase to the use of fund balance appropriated. So, we're going from 2,177,000, excuse me, 2,107,000 and change, and that's how we're paying for the loan and paying for the equipment invoice we just got. So, I said, I don't know whether there's money, there's probably money in other pockets, but while I search for it, we'll just take it out of fund balance that we have and pay for it probably after year-end. That's probably going to be one of those timing things, where we got the invoice this year, last minute, and we won't pay it till next year, so it'll become an accounts payable, and we'll just pay it next year after we make sure it's right. Page six of eight, you have the Head Start Fund. I work closely with the Head Start Division, Ms. Peeler, of course, and Ms. Penner. Ms. Penner does a wonderful job helping us be the accountants in this situation, but you can see there's no adjustments. So, we had that nailed down probably three budget amendments ago. That was nailed down early. Last but not least, well, we're going to go back to page one, but section 13 and 14, you have two adjustments here. And in section 13, which is your budgeted expenses, you see the Crest High School lighting for 164,800, and Shelby High Lighting for 107,000. We just got those contracts signed, sealed, and delivered and all that. I had a budget for it, and therefore, on the bottom, you see the entry goes from zero to, even though we got 4.9, I don't have it in this budget, because why inflate a budget for no good reason? Next year, you'll see 4.9 minus 272. So, that 272 will pay for the lighting, in the budget, pre-audited, locked and ready to go, and that's all that's going on in the capital outlay fund. Now, back to Fund Two. And the reason I didn't start there, even the law says you've got to have it on the front of this budget amendment, is because this is where it all flushes out. You know, if you didn't have the money in the state budget, and you didn't have the money in the federal budget, and you didn't have the money anywhere, you need to budget for it, because we have to play the rule of two-digit purpose codes. When the auditors come in in August, they're going to say, did you have this budget approved? And was it by two-digit purpose codes? And all that. So, this is just trying to get us to where we need to be to make sure we satisfy our external auditors, quite frankly. And what you see is we've increased regular instructional services. So, that means we had a lot more regular instructional services on our state or federal, probably state, budget, because we were making sure we were going to spend every dime. Well, we overspent the state money, so now we're pushing it to local. Next one is, same thing with EC, special population services. We overspent state, and this is generally speaking, so we're pushing it now to local. Now, school leadership services, we didn't need all that money that we booked there, so that's good. It went into the regular instructional services and/or the special population services, so that's good. Things are going into the classroom. Co-curricular services went down, and so did school-based support services, so, as well as financial and human resources. So, we overbudgeted, quite frankly, those in the local budget. The good news is, for the board, that money went into regular instructional services and special population services. So, there's not a better scenario than we didn't spend all of our money in other things, we spent it in the classroom. And then, last but not least, this did not come out of committee, so we need the board to approve this amendment.
Any questions for Mr. Karpinski?
Mr. Karpinski, those of us who sit on the Finance Committee understand the work that you and your team go through. It's a juggling act. I mean, it's just blown my mind. But I'd just like for you or Ms. Angie, just to take a minute to recognize your team, and before we take this vote.
Absolutely, and I'll tell you right now, we've got one of the best teams technically in the whole state. I've worked with good people before, these people know what they're doing, there's no question about it. You know, can we get better? No question about that, too. I mean, I think we need to make sure that not only our team, but school bookkeepers and departmental bookkeepers are properly trained to get things done. It just takes time to do not only what we do, but yes, I would like to recognize Angie Goffey as payroll supervisor, and Rob McDonald to introduce their teams. Rob is our purchasing director, and we'll start with Angie.
Yeah, I've been around all the time, so no problem. My staff is Sherri Champion, Lisa Reiki, and Michael Pierce. Now, without them, I couldn't do what I do. Take it over.
Who's next?
Hey, Rob, Dan, my staff affairs and finance, labor monitoring, gave me this one. Don Pierce, he said, wait a minute, and then, I think those folks noticed what happened. As Dan said, the school bookkeepers, the payroll, and also the department bookkeepers, those folks on there weren't supporting what we had to do.
Thank you to all of you.
Don't forget your assistant.
I do need to say kudos to my administration assistant for finance. Without her, I don't know what I would do, but, like I told the committee, the hardest job she has is putting up with me. Wow. Michelle Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank all of you for what you do. It has been educational being on that Finance Committee, and you probably have one of the more frustrating jobs where you're never finished. As stated this morning, you had information coming in before this meeting that had to be consolidated and put in the budget in the right place, and get that out to us, so really, we do appreciate what you do.
I make a motion, we approve the budget amendment.
Who was the second? Mr. Hunt? Any further questions or discussion? Those in favor, if you'd raise your hand. Mr. Blanton?
Aye.
All right, carries nine zero. Thank you, Dan, and your team. Next, we have the Head Start Update. Dr. Fisher, I think you were going to handle it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Before I start real quickly, would like to draw attention to Dawn Flowers and Ginger Jackson, the back. They have joined us today to run the technology and everything from the back. Their substitute are pinch hitting for Dr. Scholl, and Mr. Weiss, and Mr. Gilmore. Depends on the outcome, you know.
It's been running smooth so far.
I understand, I understand. No need to comment. I think Dr. Scholl's listening, so hopefully he heard that, but they are...
We'll make sure he did.
Yeah, we appreciate them being with us today. And I would like to just to reiterate the appreciation for our finance team, both here and at the school level and across our district. You know, I was at a superintendent's meeting at the end of last week, and had the opportunity to hear Alexis Schaus, who's really the CFO for the state, and she talked about just the unprecedented challenges that this year brought. You know, it's always a challenge, and so it's never easy. You see the workings of how, you know, detailed school budgeting is, but when you're looking at this year, we had, you know, federal money, all the extra dollars, PRCs, too numerous to count, and when we, you know, literally, there are, you know, just tons of PRCs out there. I had a conversation with our finance team one time, and at some point, we're going to run out of numbers, you know, and go from there. But just keeping up with all that, bonus pay, retro pay, I don't know that I've seen a retro pay that's enacted in one tax year that retroed into another tax year. Just keeping up with all that stuff and implementing all those things is a challenge, and so I appreciate the work there. Real briefly, you've got some information at your spots, and several things on board docs, in terms of a recommendation for a Head Start Update, and there, in that information, you have a recommendation to approve the presented change in scope of the Cleveland County Schools Head Start application. You've got that change in scope document that Ms. Peeler, and I appreciate Ms. Peeler and Ms. Hirsch being here today, to support this recommendation. This recommendation comes from our Office of School Readiness, has been presented to the Policy Committee, or the Policy Council for Preschool, and it's also been presented to the Educational Programs Committee. So, you've seen that change of scope, and really, you know, that's a lot of information that would be presented to the state Head Start level, but the change of scope request is to reduce the Cleveland County Head Start by 32 slots, beginning in the 22-23 school year. And so, when you talk about reducing slots, you know, obviously, your questions are probably like mine. Why do we do that? Why would we want to reduce slots for students? And basically, that, the reduction recommendation comes for two primary reasons, and underneath those primary reasons, there's lots of things under those primary reasons, but really, reason number one is staffing concerns. You have information, and I'll kind of hit it a little bit right here. We have, in Head Start only, we have three teacher vacancies and six TA vacancies. And that is assuming that this recommendation is approved, and we eliminate 32 slots. We still have three teacher and six TA vacancies in Head Start. Right now, we've got a total of five pre-K teacher vacancies and seven TA vacancies in pre-K. So, we are in need of pre-K staff, those licensed staff, so that's a concern. One of the concerns with vacancies is increased requirements for Head Start staff. Just recently, Head Start staff requirements for especially those TAs have changed. It used to be where you could have a two-year degree, and you would be able to be a teacher assistant in those classrooms, and now your two-year degree has to be in a specific area. So, if you have been okay for a while, now you might not be okay to remain in those classrooms. And so, those folks aren't grandfathered in, they're having to go back to school to get a degree. We're helping with that, we're working with the community college, but some folks have worked for a while and don't want to do that, so then they can take that opportunity and go to move into a K5 classroom at one of our elementary schools and not have to do that. So, it's created, you know, a real staffing issue. So, I think one of the reasons, and I really don't want to prioritize the two reasons, but one of the reasons why the reduction is just, you know, the lack of staffing. We have some concerns with that moving forward. If you remember back in the spring, we had to close a classroom at one of our elementary schools for a period of time because of staffing. The second reason is purchasing power, and really, as Dan said, and I'll kind of hit back on this, and you're going to hear this, I think, frequently over the next couple years, is the dollar does not go as far as it used to. And we see that when you're looking at, you know, when you go to the grocery store, you go to the gas pump, those dollars do not extend as far as they used to. When we're looking at our dollars extending into other places, you're looking at since 2018, 2019, in four years, the retirement rate has increased 6%. Health insurance has increased, social security has increased, our supplements have increased. So, when you increase all those things, and some of those are great, because our teachers are getting supplements and their pay increase, but when we're paying that, when all those other things, such as retirement, health insurance are increasing, those are costs that we can't control. And so, the purchasing power of our dollars is not what it used to be. And we can, you know, we see that in Head Start, and I think you're going to see that across the board. You see that in your own personal incomes every day, just it doesn't go as far as it used to. So, I'd be glad to kind of, to get more in-depth in there, if there are additional questions about, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, our recommendation is to approve the presented change of scope to the Cleveland County Schools Head Start application, and to be specific, that change of scope request is to reduce the Cleveland County Head Start by 32 slots, beginning in the 22-23 school year. Those 32 slots would be three-year-old slots, so there would not be four-year-old slots. We wanted to keep those four-year-old slots in preparation for school readiness. So, that's our recommendation. Glad to try to answer any questions you may have. Again, Ms. Peeler, Ms. Hirsch are here to answer maybe some specific questions that may come up as well.
I've got two clarifying questions. The increased educational requirements, that's a federal-level requirement, is that right, or is that coming from the state?
Is that a state licensure requirement, and all of our classrooms have to be licensed? So, does that affect all of the...
Okay, so if we need to change that, we need to complain to Raleigh, I guess is what I'm...
Yes.
Okay, that's what...
Whoa, I missed that.
Mr. Blanton, Ms. Peeler said that was a state requirement, a licensure requirement, and since our classrooms have to be licensed, that is a state licensure requirement.
And then, my second question was, or just clarifying, our funding for this has stayed flat over the last few years, but costs have gone up, is that right? We're relatively flat?
We have received, in there you see that we have received some COLA increases and some small increases, but those increases do not keep pace with the increased costs. The increased costs from retirement benefits and just normal doing business. I believe in your document, and I believe this is right, Ms. Peeler, but 89% of that Head Start budget is going to salary. And so, you know, it's not going to other places, it is going into people, and ultimately, by having less students attend in those classrooms, we'll need less people, which is going to help us financially, but also help us from the vacancy standpoint. I think it's important to know, and I illustrated this in some of my comments to you in writing, is that employees will not lose a job. If somebody had been working in one of those classrooms, we have vacancies, we'll move that. Ms. Peeler does a great job of having to move staff, and sometimes that may mean that to keep a person employed, they may have to move from school A to school B, but we will not, nobody will lose their job in the reduction of this. We do, and it's in the documents that are there, I think, and some of the notes that I've provided for you, highlighted the Cleveland County Pre-K Program, and when we're talking about pre-K, make sure you understand, pre-K is the big umbrella, Head Start is a portion of our pre-K program, but we will continue to have sites at each elementary school, serving all attendance zones. And really, you know, just a reminder, in Shelby, all of those pre-Ks are established at one, so you don't have a pre-K site in Jefferson or at, you know, James Love, but we serve those students at the pre-K center at Elizabeth. So, we're still continuing to provide services throughout the county, but this is just a reduction in slots to help with the overall budget and also staffing concerns.
Any other question? Mr. Shores?
I just want to clarify, I heard this correctly. The three teachers and the six TAs and the five pre-K and the seven TAs and the pre-K, those are, still will be open with the reduction?
Yes, sir. So, the five and seven is the big number. Now, inside of that five and seven is the three and six. The three and six are just Head Start. So, essentially, outside of Head Start, we still have two teacher vacancies and one TA vacancy, but yes, that is, that is, that data is assuming that we go ahead and reduce these spots and we can place that staff. And that's as of, when Ms. Peeler sent me these notes, as of yesterday, so hopefully nothing's changed since then, unless we've hired some folks, but that is, we still have vacancies in those classrooms.
Are you seeing any applicants? I figured just going to say that. Just my opinion, it's, you know, if you're a teacher assistant, and now you're required to go get additional training, or you could go over to an elementary school and keep your teacher assistant's job and make the same thing and not have to get any, that don't make sense to me. Where's the, don't get me started.
If you look on the back page of the notes that I've given you, there's some teacher salary information there. I think that's real important to see, because like, you know, in this example, you know, Ms. Peeler's provided, you have a teacher salary of $40,000, and that's okay, but you've got to look at all the other dollars that go and accustomed to that and go into that budget, so that really, that $40,000 teacher is costing at least 62, almost $63,000 when you factor in all those things. And I can, you know, the information we got last week from the folks in Raleigh is retirement and health insurance, they said, don't expect it to flatten out. It's going to continue to go up. And a superintendent asked, what's the cap? Where do you think it's going to level out? And they gave us a number that is very con... And they gave us a number that is very concerning in terms of where that's leveled out. So, we're going to continue to see the purchasing power of our dollars is going to continue to be limited as we move forward.
Can you have the question?
Just one other thing. The, there's going to be an incentive for those TAs that are in these pre-K classrooms to remain in those pre-K classrooms rather than jump ship and go K-5, because, you know, there will be a salary reduction if they do. And Ms. Peeler, you know, she did a good job of explaining that to the Policy Committee and also to the Head Start Policy Committee also. So, you know, I didn't hear that presented today as far as those TAs and what the benefits are for them to remain and try to get that certification, but there is a monetary benefit for them to continue in the program that they're in.
I didn't know that. Makes me feel a little better.
Mr. Umpfress?
I haven't got a question.
I'll get you in a minute, Mr. Blanton.
So, we're also going to pay their education costs, too. Is that correct? If they want to go back to Cleveland Community College and get the two-year...
If they're, if they're next to assistance, we think that's...
We should be working on that.
But if they're in pre-K or smart students...
No money for that right now. That's just a regular...
Okay. All right. But we're looking at that, I guess. Mr. Blanton, you had a question?
Yes. Who was the person in Raleigh that brought that up? Because I'll tell you what, we got TAs that does a lot of hard work, and they get paid very little, very little for that. I'd like to know who is responsible in Raleigh for that all the way across the board.
Well, Mr. Blanton, I was going to recommend, when we finish with the vote, that our Educational Committee discuss whether we would like to write a resolution to the General Assembly to cover this, so we can refer that back to committee.
That definitely needs to be done, because we've had a lot of people that put in a lot of time, and we've asked a lot from TAs where I know other places, they don't have to have that education, but we're requiring, and now we're requiring our TAs to get more. I'd like to hear a bottom answer to that. That's a big wagon in my book.
Well, I agree with you on that one. We need to get an explanation of that, and I think we can do that through our committee.
And I want to know who the person's name is, the who's that came out with that. I want to know that if a legislator's done it, whoever done it. In other words, they need to make equal playing field for all schools if that's the case, because that's just making it rougher on our public schools there.
Mr. Blanton?
It's a good help.
That is a state requirement for licensure, that obviously our preschool classrooms, our Head Start classrooms have to be licensed. That information, those requirements come from the Head Start Office in Raleigh, and we can provide that contact information to the Head Start Office there.
Okay. I'd like to have it, because they're going to have to do a lot of explaining. We've been, we've been running a pretty good operation on our Head Start and our TA's doing a good job, and then we've paid them very little to nothing over the years, and then, then coming up with things like that.
Well, Mr. Blanton, I'll have...
You're getting me bowling down here.
Well, I'll have Ms. Peeler get me that information, and I'll include it in my Friday update.
No, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to place a question. It came from committee.
Yeah, I was going to, I think it did come through committee, so we've got a motion and a second. Any further questions on the Head Start update? Those in favor, if you'd raise your hand. Mr. Blanton?
I'm not voting for something like that. That there, that is not right. I think we need to fight that. State or no state, federal or no federal. I'm ready to fight for our TAs.
We can fight that going forward, but we have to do this today to get our paperwork right to finish out the year and get next year started. So, do you want me to record you as a yes or a no vote?
Yes.
All right. And if we would have our, Mr. Umpfress, review, and the Educational Committee could look into that and see what we can do.
If we knew this was coming, if we knew that was coming, we needed to have done discuss this.
All right. Next, we have the auditorium project contracts. We approved a resolution, I think at our May meeting, to proceed with auditoriums, and the contracts have been formally announced. Those have been on board docs for a few days. I'm sure everyone read all 34 pages of both. So, are there any questions on the contracts? We have Mr. Sink over here. Hopefully, he can answer any that you might have. So, what's the pleasure of the board?
I want to approve the auditorium contracts.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Glover, second, excuse me. Motion by Mr. Hunt, second by Mr. Glover. And I assume you're including Crest and Burns jointly?
Crest, I said.
Yeah. There you go. Any further questions or discussion? All right. Those in favor, if you'd raise your hand. Mr. Blanton?
Aye.
Okay. That carries nine zero. We have two operations projects. First is a window glazing project for Burns and Crest. This is part of the CMTA Heating and Air Project. This was initially put out for bid in May of '22, and we only received one bid back. That bid was not opened, and the project was immediately rebid, and we received two bids. And the low bid on that is with MSJ Construction for $517,200, and that is for both schools, both Burns and Crest, and that'll be for the first and second floor of the two-story portions. And this bidding process went through our procurement folks, Mr. McDaniel, and our attorneys have overseen all of that, so we're in good shape there. And I do believe this came in a few hundred thousand less than budget. So, so far, we're two-for-two on heating and air projects being under budget. So, any questions on that, or do we have a motion? Well, this came from committee also for recommended for approval. So, any questions or discussion? All right. Those in favor, if you'd raise your hand. Mr. Blanton?
Yea.
That carries nine zero. Second one is the mobile unit lease. Again, at our May 9th board meeting, we approved lease of mobile units for the four high schools to rotate classrooms during the heating and air changes. After that was approved, the winning bid came back to us and did not have enough quad units to supply all four high schools. Apparently, those mobile units have to be sealed by an engineer or licensed in the state that they're going to be set up, and theirs did not have a North Carolina license. So, we went to a second company for bids. The total still came in less than the next highest bid. So, the original bid was supply Burns and Crest, because those projects are going to be bid first. The second is for Kings Mountain and Shelby. The total will be $707,892. That's with a contingency. We may need a crane to put some of these in place down at Kings Mountain. So, this did go through committee and is recommended for approval. Any questions on the mobile contracts?
One quick question. The initial bid that it's no longer available, were they aware that they would not meet those state requirements when they made that bid? I mean, it's kind of odd.
Apparently not. They thought their units were licensed for both states. I believe this, is it Will Scott there in South Carolina? And so, most of their units are licensed in South Carolina. Do you have any additional, Dr. Womper?
Okay. They thought that they had, and they still do for Burns and Crest. We are still using them for that. It's just for the Kings Mountain. They didn't have the quad units. It's double units, a Crest and Burns, and they did have those. And the quad units that they thought that they had, they thought had to be put around still.
And the other bids we received originally were using units from this first company. So, it...
Were using?
Will Scott.
Will Scott.
Yeah, so they were kind of a pass-through for everybody, and that's how we ended up with a separate company. So, this will be, I'm looking for the company name, Mobile Modular.
What's the, how soon will they set those up? When will that...
The one for Will Scott, Burns and Crest will come in July, and then August for Mobile Modular.
So, they'll be ready to go? Lot going on?
Any other questions or discussion? Those in favor of the Mobile Modular bid, if you'd raise your hand. Mr. Blanton?
I'm not in favor of it, but I'll go ahead and do it, because we had mobile units and we sold them.
All right. Let's see what's next here. Personnel report, Dr. Fisher. Did you?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. You have personnel report for assistant principals. We respectfully request the board's approval of this report, so we can go ahead and get these assistant principals ready to go for the beginning of school. So, it kind of worked out today to be able to bring this personnel report, go ahead and get those approved. So, we respectfully request the board's approval.
Well, it's a pleasure of the board.
Need to approve.
Motion by Mr. Umpfress. Second by Mr. Fitch. Any questions or discussion? Those in favor, if you'd raise your hand. Mr. Blanton?
Aye.
That carries nine zero. Mr. Shores, do you have a motion to enter closed session?
Yes. I move that we enter in a closed session, so with the general statute 143, verse 318.11, subsection A 3 and 6, to consult with the attorney, reference the McKinney versus Cleveland County School case.
Before we get a second, Mr. Sink, do you have information to provide an update on Paris versus?
I do.
Okay. So, if you'll add that to your motion, Paris versus...
And also the Paris versus Cleveland County School case.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Shores, second by Mr. Fitch. Those in favor, if you'd raise your hand. Mr. Blanton?
Aye.
All right. That carries nine zero. So, we'll...
Hey, will I be a part of that, Chair?
By policy, you can't be in a closed session remotely, but we can sign you in when we come back.
Okay. Do you want me to just hang on, or how long, how long do you think its closed session's going to be?
I hope about 15 minutes. Is that better?
Okay. Well, I can hang, I can hang on if you want me to hang on.
Just hang on. We're going to be as quick as we can.
Okay.
All right. We're entering open session.
So...
Motion by Mr. Hunt, second by Mr. Shores. Those in favor, if you'd raise your hand. Mr. Blanton, are you back with us?
Yes.
In closed session, the board received an update on the McKinney versus Cleveland County Board of Education case, and the board provided direction to the attorney for that, and we received an update on the Paris versus Cleveland County Board of Education. No action was taken there. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right. Those in favor, we're done. Thank you.